Okay, I'm gonna call this village board meeting for November 4th, 2019. Board of, roll call please.
Joe Sizelberger.
Here.
Kristen Ronge.
Here.
Lilian.
Chris Elner.
Here.
The Loon.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Okay, first thing we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on October 31st. The final agenda was posted on the same date, October 31st, at all three village posting locations, and the final agenda and meeting packet were made available on October 31st.
Okay. I'd look for a motion. Actually, I'm gonna pull something. That's number five. So we'd look for a motion to approve one through four.
Move approval of the consent agenda, one through four.
Second.
Motion by Phil, and second by Erin Moran. Any comments, questions? Call to order. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it. So, number, number five, approve appointment of Kathy Sheffield to library board. She's here this evening, so I wanted to first recognize her. Second, we went through a process with myself and Jean to choose Kathy from the individuals who appro, uh, who applied for the position, and wanna congratulate her and recognize her tonight, as well as to, once again, thank Jeff Vine for all of his work he did with the library while he was on. He is no longer on the committee, and just was a absolute great person to work with on that project and helped us to get that done. So, I'd look, I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Kathy Sheffield to library board.
I'll second.
So, motion by myself, second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Chris, before the vote. Jean didn't provide a public comment sheet. Did you wanna comment on?
We're not. I just wanted to introduce her. I didn't realize it was gonna be pulled from the consent agenda. I wanted to introduce Kathy.
So, okay, so we've got a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd have it. Okay. Public comment for items not on the agenda this evening. Anybody would like to, or do we have any papers?
We have one from Jean, but you're your dresser.
Well, you can make your, if you wanna make a comment, you're free to, still.
No, I just thank you for appointing her, Chris, and Kathy, and I'm sure she'll do a great job.
Okay, thank you. Todd?
Two things that I wanna share with you. In front of you is an eight-page insert, copy of an insert that was included in Business Magazine. The magazine came out today. It goes to management and executive folks across the region, and it includes this eight-page insert in the center of the magazine. This was a partnership between the Chamber of Commerce and the village, and then you'll notice a few businesses that advertised within that. They helped fund this as well. So, I thought the writer, the writer and the photographer did a real nice job of painting the picture of Wannakee as it is today. So, give that a read. Hopefully, we get some good, good interest from folks from that.
So, for anybody in the community that might want these? Want a copy of this?
Well, we do have, we do have a thousand overruns that we can provide. We'll have them available here in the lobby. We'll have them at the Chamber of Commerce as well.
Okay.
Or if anybody wants to contact me, I'm happy to provide them.
Okay.
The second thing is, last week, we revealed the new createwannakee.com website. If you look up on the screen, this is the evolution of our Creative Economy Initiative. As you know, we worked a branding project to establish what's now called Create Wannakee. There's the logo top left that was designed by a resident. And she won a contest to, to design the, that logo, and then we used that logo to design this website, as well as a Facebook page dedicated to all things creative, unique, and fun in our community. So, we'll be using this system to promote events of all sorts, tell the story of Wannakee's creative businesses and people, and continue the momentum on our Creative Economy work.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Kevin?
I would just add, they've started the process of fixing a couple of the humps on London Drive. The road will be closed overnight. They'll be starting the other one, the north section, they started today. They'll be paving those tomorrow. They'll continue on on Wednesday if we don't get too much snow. And I did get a report, they did find some crushed concrete in some of the samples that they found.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll just say, I think our, our couple events that we had here between Boobash, Halloween Out at Schumacher Farm, were all great successes, and thanks to all that volunteered their time and efforts to put those, put those on, and our kids having a great time, and some adults, of course, too. Okay. Next we have, and we have public comment on the 2020 Village of Wannakee budget. For those, anyone who would like to address us on, on our budget this evening, and then we can have some comments from the board if you have questions about the budget as it was proposed last time. Is that?
I don't have any flips.
Okay. I'll open it up if anyone would like to address us.
Is there gonna be a public hearing, a formal public hearing as well?
Next meeting will be.
Next meeting. Yeah, this is kind of an opportunity to get us in front of it ahead of time. So, if you have comments, I'd, I'd love to have them tonight.
Well, I just had asked Todd about, and you, about Reef Park. And so, I'm kinda concerned about a $15,000 study is in the budget to look at improvements to Reef Park. But Reef Park is really little. It's just basically where the depot is. And so, I mean, for a $15,000 study to do paving and brickwork and landscaping, it just seems like it's kind of excessive. So, if maybe you could explain a little bit more, besides what you emailed me.
I'm not concluding that a little bit of concrete and landscaping is the solution that we're talking about. The study has determined why it might be a best approach to making good use of the space around the depot. There certainly are some issues with drainage methods over there. The, the water into the basement of the depot is a problem, and we've got a mix of boardwalk, bricks, stone, and turf surrounding that. So, that itself is an issue that's gonna require more than just a simple replacement to solve the problem. So, that, that's a functional part of the study. The other is, is to evaluate how best that park in that area can be, can be of service to the community in general, as a centerpiece of our downtown. So, that's, that's kind of the nuts and bolts. I, I really don't, I, I'm not concluding, besides the fact that I hope we do fix the drainage issue, on what might be suggested from the landscape architects.
So, would you agree that it's, we're looking at, we're budgeting 15,000, but it's up to 15,000?
The, we, we do.
Are you planning for that expense?
We, we do have a, a, a proposed, a proposal to do the work from Ed Freer, who does our planning services. That proposal is $20,000. What I'm proposing is that we budget 15 out of the economic development budget, and then, and then work with the chamber to cover the balance. So, I'm looking to the board of the Chamber of Commerce to cover the additional 15, or additional 5,000.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I'm just wondering, the chamber's really the only thing there, so I wonder the chamber pay the majority of it versus the village?
Okay.
Just something to think about.
I think that would be a thing for us to think about and have a discussion on. We own the facility.
It is a village park, and the, the building is village-owned.
Correct.
Yeah. I agree. I mean, I'd like to, 'cause I've had thoughts over the years, I need to go down there, I need to tear the deck off, I need to re-landscape to get the water away from the building. There's some common sense things that I think need to be done, just to help save the building. But I understand Todd's point, where we need to look at this thing maybe in a little bigger picture, and, and how we utilize that space maybe better than we do today, or going forward. So, I don't know enough of the details now to say, is $15,000 absorbing it, or is that what we need to spend? I, we'll give us some time to look at it. But I, I mean, I agree, I, I think, I, there's some easy ways to solve some of the problems there, but I don't think we fix it by just changing and fixing the brick and getting the water to run away from the building. I think there's more to it than that.
And to be clear to the public, whether you're a board member or resident, you can't just go there and rip the full boards off. To be clear. To be clear. We can't do that. Even if we want to, that's not appropriate. So, Jerry, you had your hand up first, I believe.
Yeah, it was.
Jerry Ash, you, state your name if you would.
Jerry Ashmore, at 114 South Street. If this is a park, why isn't this study in the parks budget being expressed as being in the economic development budget?
Correct. That's, that's exactly why I proposed, proposed it, for the function of it as a community development piece within our main street. Can it be a parks? Sure. Does the, does the parks department wanna maximize the dollars they have to do parks improvements? Of course. Do I see relevance to economic development for Reef Park in particular, in its strategic location? Yes. So, I think to all, it's affirmative on all things. Can it be in the parks department? Yes. Is it reasonable to be in the economic development? Yes. If you have a preference, if the board has a preference, I'm happy to make modifications if you, if you feel that's appropriate.
Okay.
I'm just curious if it was put out to bid. Mary Heinbecker, 306 West Third Street, Wannakee.
Nope. Nope, it wasn't put out to bid, and we're not initiating the study. The reason for getting a quote from our planners was to establish a budgetary figure. The decision on whether we bid a project or not is one that could be considered as we get closer to initiating the project. It would not have to be bid. State law only requires construction projects over a specified amount. I forget what it is.
Twenty-five thousand. This is not construction contract.
This is not construction, this is study. So, it's not required, although it's not, it's not outside of typical process for us to get pricing from multiple groups, which is definitely reasonable to do as we work and get closer to doing the project. That can be done by making direct, direct contact with planning companies that specialize in the work. But again, my purpose in getting that quote from Ed Freer was to establish a budgetary figure for planning purposes.
Anyone else out there? Board members, any comments in regards to the budget for this evening?
Yes.
Go ahead, Erin.
About the library and potentially, we had talked about maybe operating, opening hours for Sunday in 2021, but many communities do their Sunday hours by school year, so we could look at maybe opening, I'm sorry, starting Sunday hours potentially in September or with the school year, so that wouldn't be like a major jump, I guess.
So, you'd like to have us look at opening for September of next year?
Yeah, early starting, planning where we could get that funding and whatnot, if that makes sense.
Erin had talked to me about this as a, a priority of hers, and I do have some information I can share with how we might go about addressing that in the 2020 budget. Happy to share that. And I combined that with, and Gary, maybe this is where you take, take the mic. Gary also had contacted me about interests that he had related to some public work staffing. Did you wanna touch base on that as well?
Well, I think, you know, public works is an area that, you know, if we don't, if we don't consider increasing our staff, we're gonna have to reduce our services. And it's just that simple. We only have so much manpower. We use all the technology we can come up with to utilize that today the best way. So, I think we'd be wise to look at adding additional staff to, and Todd has mentioned some, maybe doing some of the cleaning for the buildings in combination, along with helping, you know, booster our public work staff. I mean, we've got miles and miles more street every year. We've got leaf pickup, we've got snow plowing, we've got all the issues that people I'm sure are calling about today. The bill probably got 30 calls. When are you gonna come pick up my leaves today? It takes manpower, and our village continues to grow, and we've not increased that staff. That's something we need to do.
Well, we have, we have increased the staff. When was the last time we? Probably a couple of people since I've been here, but, but your point is not, not to keep, not in pace with added roads, added parkland.
Right.
And streets to plow, et cetera.
All the things we need to accomplish that we can't get to today, so, I'm a big supporter of that.
So, those were the two pieces of direct feedback I received from the village board over the past week or so?
And I did mention that, that Six Mile Creek Corridor study that I thought would be something we should look at. I mean, I think that's kind of a gem of the village, and I think we need to have a long-term study on how to protect and maintain this whole Six Mile Creek Corridor throughout the village. So, that may be something else you wanna consider.
So, in relation to the, to the first two, two points, I do wanna provide for the board some ideas on how it is that you can possibly crack that nut. And neither, neither Erin nor Gary suggested to me that we should increase taxes further to accomplish these things. So, with, with that in mind, I wanted to toss an idea to you, to the board, for you to think about as we move closer to our hearing in two weeks and budget approval. Basically, tonight, I wanna see if this makes sense to you. So, I think, three questions. How can we add library hours? And Erin, you were suggesting at the start of the next full school year. That'd be September, September of 2020. Gary, adding a laborer who would also service some of the community facilities in terms of building maintenance, custodial services. Those facilities now that are served by a private company are the police department and utilities. And I can tell you that both the police department and utilities really care to move beyond outsourced cleaning services and have, have staff perform that service. And then, third, to do all this without, without increasing the tax burden. So, here's thoughts on how we do that. The first is, if we're not gonna increase the tax burden, we have to talk about whether there's, whether we can establish capacity within the tax levy that we've established in the proposed budget thus far. And maybe after I finish to Renee, I know you prepared a slide to remind everybody of where, where we were at after the last budgeting session. So, there's one, there's one item in the budget that I've, that I would call out as a, a one-time cost that we're funding annually through levy. So, several years ago, the village made a decision to change the way in which we afford payout to retirees for accumulated sick leave for health insurance benefits. That practice is essentially has, has ended. However, we had grandfathered employees, as well as already retired employees, who were entitled to that benefit. So, we established a cutoff point, the village board did, and then the, the village performed accounting studies to establish what our total liability was. That, that's, that is an exact number. It's something like 1.1.2 million, or something like that, over the next 20?
Yeah, I mean, it goes out to 2038. We have to continually calculate it. There are, it also is a benefit in the police contract, so even after the other people drop off, there will be a minimal amount for police as well.
So, what I speculate is, at the time that we completed that calculation and, and made that sort of switch in our practice, if the village at that time had, had adequate unassigned fund balance to simply fully fund it, fund the liability period, that that likely would have been the step the village took. Instead, what the village did, which was probably at its, that it had, was able to do at the time, was set aside a number, I think in the neighborhood of $400,000 as an assigned balance, and then budget, budgets about $125,000 a year for that specific purpose. This year, we've already suggested a portion of fund balance to, to cover that levy amount, but our proposed budget does still have a $75,000 levied, levied funds for the purpose of funding our retiree health insurance liability. So, I'm, I'm, I'm looking to label this liability as a one-time cost, 'cause it does have a finite end, except, except for what might be some police department issues. For the most part, that, that big nut will have a finite end. And with the unassigned balance that we, that we have, what I'm suggesting is, we consider looking at that balance, taking an amount necessary to fully cover that liability, and essentially be done with it, and no longer than, going forward, being forced to levy to, to support the retiree health insurance liability. Now, that amount to fully cover would be $875,000. As Renee pointed out, that has to be reviewed each year. Insurance rates change, an employee might leave employment, pre-retirement, therefore removing that liability. So, there's a lot of, there's factors that, that move and manipulate this number over time, but as we look at it, this would, this would be the maximum, as we can best establish at this point, for that liability. That would also address something we've talked about, which is the unassigned balance, and that amount itself being outside of our, our balance policy. Our policy calls for maintaining an unassigned balance of 20 to 25 percent of?
The next year's expenditure budget.
That. With this reduction, as I'm proposing here, we would end the 2019 year at about 29 percent. So, we still have capacity there. We possibly achieve this goal and open up some levy room for us. Okay. So, that's the potential to establish capacity. Now, to estimate the expenses, step, first one is the Sunday library hours. Eric, I don't see Eric here. Jean is here. I don't know if Jean shared, shared, or if Eric shared this with you, but in order to start this program in September, September 13th of 2020, that would cost a total of $27,000 for budget year 2020. And I identified, I itemized those, those costs there. The laborer position that Gary's discussing, for a start date of April 1, 2020, that would be a $48,000 cost. Now, there would be an offset. The utilities are certainly willing to, to pay to receive this internal service support from the village. We haven't negotiated or discussed this deeply with utilities. I know they spend about $9,000 a year on their cleaning services. So, I, I play, I put a placeholder of $7,000 revenue towards this, so that would, that would net the impact to $47,975. Those two expenses total $75,000. So, obviously, I was utilizing the timing of the laborer position employment as perhaps a moving target for us to meet that levy capacity that we could generate by fully funding the retiree, retiree, retiree sick leave conversion. So, that, that's what I wanted to throw in front of you to perhaps get some initial feedback, concerns, or input as we then work our way towards the, towards the budget proposal that you'll see in two weeks. 'Cause if this, if this, if your sort of thumbs up to this, like pursue, explore, then Renee will wanna run the figures more formally as part of the actual budget document.
I mean, I like, I like your proposal, Todd. I think, especially the retiree health obligations, I mean, I look at it, if we have the opportunity to take care of that and deal with it today's budget, instead of, you know, burdening future boards, you know, 10 or 15 years from now, I'd rather take care of that obligation now and be responsible for it, and not affect the tax levy for the next, you know, 15, 20 years. So, yeah, I would support. And the library, I think that's the right thing to do. Other communities in the area are doing that. Our library usage has gone up dramatically, and I have a number of people telling me, why aren't we open on Sunday? 'Cause people wanna use that space. So, I would support it.
I would support it, too. It'd be nice to see the library in particular be open on Sundays. Everyone works, or a lot of people work, and, and not being able to go both Saturday and Sunday, I think, reduces the usability of it.
Erin?
I just, yeah, I think seeing the library open on Sunday would be good. You know, Pittsburgh, Semperide Forest, three Madison branches have that, so I think those are comparable communities to us. It'd be good.
Joe? I agree. I definitely support this. I think it's very solid. And I'd also like to thank previous boards for being fiscally responsible and leaving us in a position to be able to do something like this.
Stay competitive. Be open.
Stay competitive, be open.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was following. Okay. Stay competitive. All right. So, I might have a little bit different view on this, and this is just my budgeting and my thinking. Not as much for the library. It sounds like the library was wanting to do this in 2021, and all we're doing is pushing it forward. Is that kind of what you said, Erin?
Yeah.
We're just trying to move it forward. So, I can appreciate that. The $27,000, Todd, that you've got, beginning on 9/13, that's just to finish out the year? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we know what kind of impact that's gonna have on our future budgets?
I think it'd be fair to say doubling it.
Doubling or quadrupling?
You would double it, that, 'cause we would, we would not run this service during the summer months.
One semester, one semester.
So, I, I didn't, I didn't have Eric specifically run those calculations. I think on the back of a napkin, we're around 55,000. But he's further refined that work for this portion of next year. So, I'm guessing you're gonna be, I'm probably fair to say it, at least double that amount.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm good with the library portion. I'm good with how you're planning to fund it. The full-time labor is where I'm kinda, I don't have Bill coming in and asking for this. I have, and I know he's not going to do it.
I know.
But it's important that they come to us and say, we need this to keep up with our services. And I think that's important for the next meeting, that Bill be here to say, this is what I can do with this person, and this is what it's gonna help us with. 'Cause it's great that you're saying it, Gary, and, and I'm not gonna disagree, because we had the situation this year that we haven't had in many years with snow as early as it is, and we have trucks that are set up for leaf collecting that we need for plowing, and vice versa. So, we get into this trouble. Last, last couple of years, it was people saying, we need you to keep coming to get our leaves later than we obviously will have to this year, and it caused us some hesitations there, it caused us some issues, I guess, with our residents. So, that, that comes down to, I'd like to hear from Bill, maybe, do we need more trucks, To take care of what we need, in addition to personnel? 'Cause just the personnel, if they don't have the machinery to take care of it, and I don't know that, and that's what I wanna hear from him, in, in coming for, to ask for it. How you're funding it? I agree with Joe that the fiscal responsibility has put us in the position that we can make the shift to take care of it. But I think it's important for, for us to understand what, what it's gonna be used for within there.
Typically, when you have a staffing request, it comes with a pretty thorough batch of background, background explanation. I can, I can certainly tell you that I have had conversations with Bill. I know Kevin has. Kevin and I have had conversations, and I speculate that Bill, Bill and/or Kevin have had conversation with Gary, which, which is where he's come to appreciate what they're facing. But I think it's a good, a good request for us to put together a more complete proposal for what this will achieve for the organization.
Otherwise, you're looking for direction. I think you heard, most everybody was in favor. I'm, and I'm in favor, I just wanna hear that, to make sure that it makes sense for us to be spending those dollars. I would echo Gary's Six Mile Creek, to make sure that we're up, upkeeping that. I think that's been a lot of years that we haven't necessarily been addressing it, and that might not be for this year's budget, but it's something that we should be looking at with our parks department, Eric, public works. I'm not sure which one it'll fall under, or if we have to work with the state, or who, who we all have to work with in that, but I think that's.
We're in the process, in fact, I wrote it down a little, I forgot to bring it up. We're in the process of trying to solicit what the cost would be to get a handle on what that means. So, we really need to get an inventory of the entire stream bank throughout the village, what kind of condition it is, what type of, you know, treatments could be used in certain areas, and then put a budget to it. So, it's really a stream bank stabilization report. So, before we proceed with, with just, you know, picking and choosing, you know, off the top of our head, to have a complete inventory of, of the entire creek through the village, really get a handle on what different methods we can do in terms of, of stabilizing it and improving it throughout the village. That is something that I think we even talked about at Public Works, is that we want to, like, work on, on this next year.
'Cause I know we've been doing some work along the creek with the library, you know, and bringing that area up to a much more clean area. Do we have a? Do we have a plan in place for maintenance with trees that fall into the water, all those things? Is that something?
That'll be a part of it.
So, but right now, do we have anything in place currently for that? Or is it just kind of?
Yeah, I mean, if it's blocking the creek, then yeah, it's Bill's team that goes out there and clears it. That would be, that would be our approach, yeah. If we had a problem, we go fix it.
Okay. Other comments in regards to the budget? These are two that were brought by two Board members, which is great. Any others that people would have seen? All right. Any other comments out there? I don't want to cut anybody off tonight. You'll have an opportunity at the next meeting too, a public hearing. All right, let's move on then. License and permits. Number one, discuss and take action on original alcohol beverage license application for seven girls, two boys. LLC doing business is red and white. So before we start, I'm actually going to recuse myself from this position. This is something that I found out two days ago, three, I don't remember what it was. That my employer works with these folks and so it's not appropriate for me to be voting on this. So I'll be recusing from this. But go ahead and introduce.
So included in your packet is an application for a liquor license from the Hellers. This is Mike and Carrie Lynn, correct?
Carrie.
Carrie Lynn.
Yes, it's okay.
They're the applicants and they are proposing to open a new wine bar called Red and White on Main Street at the location where Lake Life is right now. They're hoping to open the establishment in December. So this is their application, it's been reviewed by the Police Department and staff recommends that we issue the license, subject to possession of a seller's permit, payment of outstanding liquor bills, and payment of any and all monies owed to the Village. The applicants are here if you guys have any questions. Plan Commission did review the conditional use permit for their outdoor premise. That's been reviewed by them as well.
This is one of our reserve licenses.
Correct.
How many do we have left?
I don't know off the top of my head, but.
It's not a concern right now?
No.
Okay.
Because that number grows every single time we add 500.
Okay. All move approval.
So we have a motion by Erin, a second by Kristen?
Yes.
To approve? Any other comments? Okay, call the question.
Aye.
I'm not, I'm not voting. So we have five zero. Okay, thank you for coming in tonight. Next, we have discuss and take action on operator license applications for Carrie Lynn. Heller, Claudia Hernandez, and Joseph Bolton. Let's do these one at a time, please.
Sure.
As far as we go through it, so go ahead, let's.
Included in the packet are the applications for liquor license operator. Staff recommends approval, subject to completion of approved responsible beverage server training courses and reviewed by the Wanta Key Police Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Gary Hirsberg, second by Phil Oles for Caroline Heller.
Specify that in your motion if you could, in particular, who it is that you're approving.
For Carrie Lynn, Carrie Lynn Heller.
So motion by Gary Hirsberg, second by Phil. Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I recused as well for this one. Okay, next we have Claudia Hernandez. Same thing.
You could probably, can you do the next two together?
Yeah, we can do the next two together.
Claudia Hernandez and Joseph Bolton, same thing, recommended approval by staff.
Move approval of the license for Claudia Hernandez and Joseph Bolton, subject to the proper steps outlined on the.
Okay, a motion by Phil Oles?
Second.
Second by Kristen Rungy. Any comments? Okay, call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it.
To adjourn?
Motion by Joseph Hirsberg to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it, thank you.